You have in your, well, as you know, the census requires us to, results of the census requires us to go back through and review the population in the various wards to make sure that there is evenly divided as possible. And there's a letter from Jeff Hawkins with Regional Planning that talks about the standards that were used, and there are four options that were presented that are in your packet. Thank you, Steve. And I think probably tonight is to provide you with those options, and if you have any questions about those. I will say that my understanding is the municipal filing period this year will be from August 3rd to August the 10th. And the statute on the redistricting provides for a 90-day challenge period once the ordinance is passed. So we'd like to make sure that the filing period falls outside that 90-day window, which would mean that if we pass an ordinance, redistricting city wards, we need to do it no later than the second council meeting this month.
For April?
Which should be the 26th. So I think Jeff did a pretty good job of laying out the rationale behind the options, and also has with the population, how they would be broken down between the four wards in those four different options. We had intended to have bigger copies of the, of those options. There's also included in your packet, a copy of the current ward map after Bethel Heights was consolidated. That might be helpful as well, so.
Which, what page is that on?
The current ward map?
Well, including Bethel Heights, yeah.
Oh, it's on page, red, red page, it's blurry, six, I think. No, five.
As it is now, Jeff?
Yes.
It's on page five, the red, red page five.
And, and so that includes Bethel Heights?
Yes, that's, that's the ward map that after we included the consolidated area of Bethel Heights, part went into Ward 1 and part of it went into Ward 2.
And so that changed those numbers that he's got in his letter?
You can see that's, yeah, those, where we adjusted the wards after Bethel Heights is divided by the railroad tracks.
Yeah.
And Plan 1 is the same, right, as that, just the original plan?
There is. Plan 1, it moves to the...
It takes a long to load, it's blurry.
Yeah, that line, that line between one and four moves, moves west a little bit.
Each of the options that you have has a legend that gives you what the population is in each of the four wards. And that it also has an indication of the, where the current council member in each of those wards resides.
Hey, Mark, we're, we're looking right now at that Plan 1. Can we throw that up on the, on our screens?
I can't get mine to come in clear for some reason.
That might, these are taking a while to load.
Yeah, and while we do that, Mayor, I just want to really point out that I think four is the cleanest cut out of all of these options.
Okay.
And I know that Ward 2 gets a bigger percentage of population through that, but, you know, to avoid any controversy, I think that's just the easiest way.
Okay.
To divide it, if y'all can take a look at that.
All right. Why don't we go through these one by one, and then we can go back to any one of them that we want to. Is that okay, Jeff?
Yeah.
Okay. There you go.
Yeah, it shows the, it shows the, where each of the city council, current city council members reside as well on each of these.
So this is Plan 1. And you can see the populations there. What's the, what's the rule on the population, Ernest, within, within what percentage? Do you remember?
I think it was 10?
Is it 10%? They gotta be within 10% of each other?
Yes, 10.
Okay.
And all of these proposed plans are, I believe, Plans, Options 1 and 2, for lack of a better term, would not involve any current council members having to change wards or being placed in a different ward.
All right, take a look at 2.
So what did you just say, Ernest?
Yep.
Options 1 and 2 in your packet, according to Mr. Hawkins' letters on page 2 and 3, says Plans 1, 2, 1 and 2, keep current city council members in their respective wards while Plans 3 and 4 would change some of the council members' wards. In other words, one council member might be in a different ward, another council member would be in a different ward.
But would they both still leave two council, two current council members to a ward?
Yes.
Okay.
It just may be a swap.
They would just basically swap wards.
Oh.
We did that a few years ago. I think it involved Eric Ford and Jim Reed. They just actually swapped wards.
So let me clarify my point.
Okay.
That was before I realized that there was a change on that. I don't know if that's gonna change my feelings about this.
It wouldn't, it wouldn't take anybody out.
Okay.
But it would swap which ward they represent.
Yeah, so that wasn't any mal-intent towards anybody here.
If we could do, I mean, anything we could do to clean up, I mean, you look at Plan 1 there and Plan, I mean, we got a, we got our own fatal finger there in 1, and anything we could do to make it easier for our residents to identify what ward, to Kevin's point on the fourth option, is probably, would probably be good.
I don't see a lot of difference between 3 and 4.
Well, 4, I think Ward 2 gets the extra southern portion, that, it'd be all of it, everything east of Turner, south of 412.
Mark, can you bring 3 up first, so we can see it? There you go, thank you. He's got 3 on the screen now, and that's a little better.
I don't understand how 4 just doesn't look like it grows that much.
On Plan 3, it takes a lot out of, more out of Ward 4.
Not a lot, though.
I'm looking at the current ward map.
It doesn't change much, and then Ward 3 grows a lot, seems like.
Let's see what 3 looks like, Mark. Or, I'm sorry, 4. Move on to that one, because that, that does have the cleanest lines. And we can see how it would impact anybody.
We're talking about 4?
Yeah, 4. Basically, it looks like it would put Amelia in 1.
Puts me, puts me in...
Oh, that's, that's Lawson in 1. Amelia would be in 4, as would Mark, right? Still?
Amelia would be in 4?
Yeah, on number 4, all the council members whose terms are until 24 would not, I want to make sure before I speak here, don't, don't change, but 3 of them that are up in 22 would, would change. They wouldn't be in the same, but they would be in different wards. They wouldn't be in the same ward together, but it would, in Plan 4.
Does that require an election to be able to move to a different ward?
Well, in the, the filing period in August, then if, let's say, for example, Plan 4 was adopted, the current council members whose terms don't expire till 24, it's not gonna affect them because they're gonna be in the same ward they represent now, but the ones that are up in 2022, they would file for the new ward.
So you're, the, the ones that would have to run anyway, Randall, would just run for a different ward number?
You just couldn't run as an incumbent, I guess, because it's a different ward?
We're having trouble hearing you.
You couldn't run as an incumbent?
Yeah, you'd run as an incumbent.
You'd run as an incumbent, yeah.
You would still...
You could still run for 4 as an incumbent, even though...
Yes.
You could still put council members on the ballot.
You could still put, Councilmember Amelia Williams, yeah, on the ballot. So you would in fact be an incumbent, you'd just be running for a different ward number.
Yeah, position 1 is what's up this year, I believe, in all four wards. And it's still, it wouldn't change anyone who's not up for election in 22.
It would just change, it would, basically, for you all, it would just change the candidate pool that you may be facing, to some extent.
The selfish part of me is if we pick between 3 and 4, I like 3 with a little more west, it has a little more west, down lower, a little more south and west, as far as being able to move, but that's the selfish part of me.
Yeah, and again, to be transparent on my part, I think it's just a cleaner cut with 4. I really didn't realize that the little dots meant something until you clarified it earlier.
4, 3 and 4 would move you, right?
No, I'd be, Mike, both Mike and I would be unaffected by that.
I don't think it moves any one, any Position 2s. It only moves Position 1s.
So what they're saying is you just, if you ran, you'd run in 3 instead?
Yeah, so you'd still run.
And it doesn't affect the years?
Correct.
Correct, Mayor?
Right.
Doesn't affect the years?
Right, it won't affect anything else.
And same with Amelia?
Right.
Right.
Who else does it move besides?
Lawson, right?
3 and 4 what?
3 and 4 moved me from 1 to 4, 4 to 1.
3 and 4 moves Lawson and...
Amelia.
Amelia.
And you.
Who are up, who are up anyway.
And 3 and 4 move you?
Yeah, and, yeah, you're right, Brian too. No, no, wait a minute, something can't be right there.
Well, it moves...
Ryan, you're in 3 anyway. You're 1 right now, right?
I'm in 1 right now.
Oh, you're in 1 now.
So it moves you to 3.
So basically, you and Amelia are swapping. Is that right?
And Mike and who would swap?
They just all pre-rotate.
Yeah, they rotate around.
Okay.
Yeah.
So it's 3 people that would be affected?
Be 3 people that would be running for a different ward.
But not against each other.
But not against each other, and they would be running anyway. So it just changes the ward number they'd be voting, they'd be running in.
So other than that, it doesn't affect anybody?
I, I, I don't think so, if I'm looking at this right.
So then Mike, does both 3 and 4 affect you?
Both 3, yeah.
So what, what's your selfishness on...
The little purple arm there at the top of, allows me to move a little west, just gives me more...
Oh, I see.
Just me flexibility.
Yeah.
And it's right next, that's up to Harbor.
You mean if you wanted to move?
If I chose to move. It gives me, that's just me being selfish.
But looking at this, it's, we need to keep in mind, and I know we're, our discussion here is fine, we need to keep in mind the citizens, how does it best help the citizens on, on which one of, which one of these plans are chosen? Does it matter?
I don't think it does.
I don't think it does either. The only thing is if it's easier to, if it's easier for them to understand where the ward lines are.
Well, I'll just tell you from, when, when I first ran, our wards were divided by Emma Avenue and 71, and so you just went to that intersection, and you did each corner, and that's where the wards were. So it was easy to know what ward you lived in, who your, you know, councilman was, so, and then we kind of, you know, changed everything up, and it really is hard to keep it straight. So I agree with Mayor, I, I think the easier the maps are, the better.
And that would be my first thought, and just what is easiest for somebody, especially somebody new coming in, to, to find out who their representative is, if that's, if that's the best, and so be it. But you got to take in the fact that a lot of people who are here, they already know who we are, or who their representatives are, it's not about us, it's about who their representatives are, and we all get calls from people from our representatives. And if it's not gonna affect them much, and if it, and if they don't mind, it doesn't have any preference to me at all, I just want to make it easier for residents.
And let me, let me ask this, does anybody have a doubt, does anybody have, anybody want to speak for Plans 1 or 2 for any reason? Prefer Plans 1 or 2?
Well, just going back to my point, if 1 looks very familiar to the original, and to the citizens, if, if that's the most comfortable, if they know where that is, that would be the only argument I have to, for 1. And to the point again, if we went to 3 or 4, more clear cut, if that's easier for the citizens, I could go for that one. I'd go for that one too.
And honestly, to me, 3, I could make the argument that 3 is as good as 4. You've got, you've got Harbor as a dividing line between, you know, instead of, instead of Elmdale, or, yeah, Elm Springs.
And I see your part on that, but if, I would prefer 4 over 3, just because it does encompass, it takes it all the way up to that Elm Springs Island, right there, and so that's a clear-cut line.
And so 4 with me, the southern part of Don Tyson, that's added to 4, south of, which is basically, all, east of, everything east of Turner goes to Ward 2. It makes that a lot simpler than how it is in 1, 2, and 3.
Let me look at that, I wasn't looking at that part. Yeah, I see what you're saying, you get a straight line.
Yeah, so it's just east.
On 4.
Yeah, I agree with you on 4.
Yeah, I see what you're saying.
How many residents does that make a change to?
Ward 2 gets an extra, what, 900 or so? About 1,000.
The one with the smallest deviation is Plan 3.
Yeah, as far as numbers go, but, right.
And this will be, this will be for 10 more years, so, or really 8 years from now. Well, probably 10, because it'll take 2 years to get it done anyway.
If it's not a huge impact either way on the residents either identifying a change within their ward, or newcomers wondering what ward they're in, I'd prefer not to move forwards. But I don't know what the greater impact is.
A lot of residents have to look at a map anyway, to know, as it is right now, to know for sure what ward they're in. And I think you would be removing a little of that with 3 or 4, but once they learn it. I don't know. And, and, and we don't have to forward anything to the next council meeting, y'all can...
But we'd have to forward something at the next committee meeting?
But we do, the next committee meeting, we need to make a decision to move something forward.
And how close, oh, pardon, how close are we coming to the 90-day?
That's, we need, we need to approve at council meeting after next.
Why don't we go ahead and forward it to the council meeting, and, and everybody can make up their mind, and we'll make, we'll be forwarding the ordinance, but without the, without the actual pick yet.
Right.
Is anyone planning to move?
Mike, apparently.
I would entertain it.
Well, and that's something to think about if you're thinking about the coming years, like for me, I planned on moving, if I moved, I would stay within, I mean, I've always lived within Ward 3, since I've owned a home.
I'd like to make the motion that we forward the ordinance, and we delete Options 1 and 2.
Second.
And we just go, and we leave the choice for the council meeting to, to pick between Plans 3 and 4.
Through the next council meeting?
So it wouldn't be with recommendation either way?
Yeah, next week.
It'd just be forwarded in the ordinance, go ahead and...
But that moves me either way. I mean, 1 and 2, don't move me, 3 and 4 do. I'd like to keep 1 and 2 on the table.
You would? Okay.
Well, you made a motion.
I kind of agree keeping 1 and 2, just because it's kind of the way it is. Maybe we don't change it.
There's not much deviation between 1 and 2 that I, I can see.
So I'll withdraw my second, right?
So just forward the ordinance without a recommendation for a map?
Well, I didn't know he was gonna say what he was gonna say.
About the, about the 90-day window?
Well, yeah, so, okay, so then, there's Randall, let's wait for him to come down. So, if we forward it now with no recommendations, basically, it's coming down to, forward to council with no recommendation.
Right.
We're well within, and we pass it next, next Tuesday, we're well within the 90-day...
Even if you pass it to 26, then the filing period will be outside the 90-day range. That's what we want to make sure it's at, because we don't want to have filing period within that 90-day window.
Yeah, right.
Okay, so again, I want to forward the ordinance to council without, without recommendation on the map, and we'll, we'll vote on the map at the council meeting.
Next week?
Yeah.
Is that your motion?
That's my motion.
I'll second that.
That gives you an option that if, if you hit it now, and don't get it done, then you can come back.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's great with me. I just wanted more than 15 minutes to compare all of them.
But there's nothing wrong with the ordinance, it's just to decide in which map.
That's right.
You need more time.
Yep.
And Mark's brought in some larger copies, if that's helpful to anyone.
With lines on them.
Yeah, with lines on them.
And if we could have those at the council meeting, Mark, it'd be really good, too.
Say what, the big trousers, we'll put on the table out, out there, it'd be easy to prove.
Next Tuesday?
That way residents can look at them too.
Okay, that's the biggest concern I have, is the residents being comfortable with the map.
If, if I'm a resident, and I am, it's not gonna...
Good thing you are.
Yeah, it's not gonna make a lot of difference to me, as long as I know where they are.
It is, because it could make a difference if someone was thinking about...
Yeah, that's, that's the main thing, people that, you know, they gotta, that's, and that's why the deadlines are what they are, so that people know in plenty of time to know how, who, what the landscape looks like when they file.
They have to refile if they've already filed?
They, nobody's filed yet.
Filing period's not until August 3rd.
Yeah, filing period's not until August, so...
Okay, so we have a, a motion, a second, to forward the ordinance to council without recommendation on the map. And all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you.
I was about to say, I feel like the, this Ward 3, that's where a lot of people that I know that are wanting to, to run live in, in that Ward 3, so it's gonna really hit that, that base quite a bit this next election.
That kind of makes the argument to me for, for Plan 3. It helps.
I like Plan, Plan 3.
Anyway, anyway, if y'all have plenty of time to look at it, it'll come back to council next Tuesday.
All right, so, close ordinance and open finance committee, and that first item has to do with granting of a utility easement. Who's going to discuss this?
I don't know, it's up Ryan's up there. Good evening, council. This item was brought to the engineering department a few weeks ago by Cox Communications. They are requesting an easement on city-owned property by the interstate and Watkins Avenue, so they can install a pole and run a fiber line across the interstate and service the children's hospital. And with that, I'm available to take any questions you may have.
The, the map's on page 12, it shows the, the 15 by 35-foot rectangle, shows the dimensions of the easement that they're seeking.
I'll make a motion that we forward the resolution to council with a recommendation for approval.
Ryan, did you say they're gonna go over the interstate?
That's their current plan, yes.
How, how does that work? Might be a dumb question, but...
For running it over, they'll have to get RDOT permission for that.
Like, like a...
A permit.
Poles and cables and...
Well, I believe that there's a, a height requirement behind it, but as far as running the lines across the interstate, I believe there, there's an RDOT permit involved for that, to place them there.
But it'd be like poles?
Yes, on both sides of the interstate.
I second Amelia's motion.
There's already, there's already lines across there, right?
Correct, yeah, there's already lines across.
Oh, it's along with the power line?
Yeah, there's already power line there.
Does this play into our Watkins project at all?
It doesn't conflict with any improvements for Watkins.
Okay, all right.
We got a second.
We got a second.
I think Jeff's still looking.
Do they pay us anything for that?
They're not proposing to pay us for this easement.
Do we typically get paid for utility easements?
Ernest, correct me if I'm wrong, but in the past, I don't believe that we have...
We usually consider the benefit to the public as being adequate consideration. And we had several easements across Shaw Park that we granted, for example, and, you know, if it helps benefit the public, then we can see that as the consideration for the easement.
All right, we have a motion, and a second to forward to council, was that with recommendation? Who made the motion?
I did. And yes, recommendation for approval.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
And, the next item is what? Go back to my agenda. Resolution to authorize the execution of design contract architect services.
There's Angie, she's ready.
Yes.
Hi.
Go ahead.
Good evening, we are asking to engage the services of Gary Clements and his architecture firm from North Little Rock to help us design some improvements to our buildings, and the Board of Directors has already approved the payment of this. So the board would pay for it, but we know it has to come through this process and be approved by you all.
We sent, we did something similar in December, I think it was, for the Law Cabin project?
Correct, correct.
If the resolution passed, or move, put our resolution before, get a recommendation for approval.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the forwarding the resolution to council with recommendation for approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you.
Thanks, Angie.
That's the end of finance.
I'll open health sanitation and property maintenance. And we have an ordinance ordering the raising and removal of residential structure located at 983 West Sunset, declare an emergency, and...
Yeah, I have to apologize on that first one, it's not really a residential structure, and I need to take that word residential out. This is a property located at 983 West Sunset, commonly known, commonly known as the Long John Silver's property, and I think Tom's here, if you have any questions about it. We did provide notice, we've had discussions with several folks about this, about this property, and there's been no movement.
Evening, council. On the Long John Silver one, made several attempts to contact them by sort of fight mail. Most successful is I talked to a woman in New York who claimed to be the owner. I did allow her to board it up to keep the homeless out. She had a fire on that property where a homeless person apparently started a fire in a shed to the southwest of the property. That did get cleaned up, and now I've lost contact, can't get her on the phone, so I'm kind of a stalemate with that property. That's why I had Ernest send it off to start the process of getting condemnation going.
The ordinance be forwarded with recommendation for approval.
Okay. Are all those in favor, please say aye. Opposed, same sign. Okay, our second one is...
Amelia, let me, before we go any further on these, is there some, anyone here to speak to any of these? In case we miss you, we want you to have an opportunity to speak. Okay, thanks. In case we miss you, we want you to have an opportunity to speak. Okay, thanks.
We have an ordinance, another raising and removal um located at three oh two Cottle and Ernest.
Oh, there you are.
That's him.
Okay.
Three oh two, okay. Yeah, three oh two is one that I came across. Guess it was October of twenty twenty-one. You know, the windows were open on this building. There's a abandoned car at this building or a car that's probably not roadworthy. Lot of overgrowth, had extension cords running from the house just to here and there. So I took some pictures, started, you know, the process, sent it out. Um, did speak to a Ricardo, is that you? I did speak to a Ricardo. They did talk about they were gonna do some work on it and rehab it. And honestly, they did cut some tree limbs, quite a few tree limbs, but really haven't done much since then. So that's where we're at at this point, so if he wants to talk about it, if he can come up with.
Anything you'd like to add? If you do, please, go to the go to the microphone, please, and give us your name and address.
Good afternoon. Uh, Ricardo Palos, uh, the address is three oh two Caro Avenue. And uh, yes, uh, we started processing some stuff. Uh, we just had real uh difficulties with family. Uh, my mom just passed away last month. Uh, we were going through the cancer through just a big process through it. Uh, now she's gone and uh I want to get this uh fixed.
So you you live at this address or you just own it?
Uh, I li- I I own it.
Okay.
Yes, I live at uh two oh four Caro, just three houses away.
Who is Pedro?
My dad.
Well, how come we have, who's your mom, Dolores?
Dolores.
How come we have uh Pedro and Dolores on this letter, Ernest?
Because that's who is listed as a property owner at the county land records. And by statute, that's who we have to send the notice to.
So so uh he's saying that your parents own this property?
My dad, my mom, yes.
They own it?
Yes.
Okay, and so you're here speaking for them?
Yes.
And your mother's passed away?
She just passed away last month, yes.
I I'm assuming this process started before that.
Yes, started in October.
Do they live there?
No.
Does anybody live there?
Uh, no.
So how long, if you, if we gave you the opportunity to improve this, how long do you think it would take you?
Um. I'm uh, I could start on the process as long as uh hall uh the windows and the outside and clean up. It shouldn't take me no more than sixty days.
Then how long?
More than sixty days. The outside.
And Tom, are there any permits that need to be renewed or?
I I've not been in the home. I mean, just from the outside. Um, I think that I spoke to Richard. He had talked about some flooring that may need to be replaced. Um, I don't know that, I don't know what the condition of the wiring is or anything. Mainly, the biggest thing was unsecured when I came across it. And uh, like I said, a lot of windows were either just gone or broken.
Do we not have any pictures, Tom?
Yeah, I have, I do have a few.
Can you, I that would help me, I. We can pass them around. We ought to try, when we have pictures, Tom, we ought to try and get them in the packet if we can, okay? Thank you.
Yeah, I think one of the pictures in there, you're gonna see, it doesn't even have electric to the house. The weatherhead's just up there by itself.
When were the pictures taken, Tom?
In October of last year.
Is there any change?
I mean, they have done some work on some trees and whatnot. They've cut some trees and cleaned up the outside a little bit, but not much has changed.
Nothing to the windows?
I don't believe so, no.
Have we had problems with people getting in or that that we know of?
Have you?
No. Well, we work right across the street.
Say you live across the street?
We we work. We own, we own the grocery store right across the street, Old Cox Show's gift shop on Crusher and Caro.
So you work across the street and you live a few houses down, right?
Yes.
So if we gave you extra time to do this, I think it's within reason that you could have access to to improve your your home, right?
Yes.
And for the council, I mean, since there is no electric to the house, you would have to get a master electrician involved. If all the other electric was perfect, just because the overhead has been off, they'd have to get a master electrician involved for that. And with materials and stuff, I mean, it's six sixty days seems, just to me, seems kind of quick, especially if we gotta get permits. If we gotta get all this other stuff done. Uh, would that, are are you sure sixty days would be?
I I'm looking.
Is that long enough for you?
I I'm looking at the outside. I mean, as far as we go on the inside, I could work with you.
So what's gonna be our requirements, Tom? You know, I mean, if he gets permits, I mean, technically, he gets six months from the day that permit started. So I mean, if I just saw progress and I could see continuous work, I mean, I can work with him, and if he gets it cleaned up on the outside, obviously, the city's gonna put out that olive branch to work with them, so.
Absolutely. When when did you first make contact with someone there, Tom?
Pretty pretty quick. I mean, I sent the letter off and I was contacted by Ri- Richard not too long afterwards.
Which letter are you talking about?
October. October.
October letter. He signed for it.
So so that's my problem, uh Ricardo, is I don't understand. If you got that letter back in October, why haven't you done anything to secure the windows since then?
Um, my neglect? Yes, my fault, yes.
Okay, what's the letter say back in October?
It's got a, it has a list of the items that he's required to.
Yeah, I basically, I I itemized about twenty-nine different items from uh water services required for each home. Waters that had been off since the previous year, twenty twenty. Um, not being in the house, you know, water heaters required for each house. Just basically standard requirements for minimal living of things.
And then if those things are done, what happens?
Then we progress to the.
I know, but in the letter, what did you say?
Basically, I gave him thirty days to start the process of cleaning it up, you know, to get it in a livable condition or otherwise we would end up going this route we're going today.
Ricardo, I I'll just say that, I mean, we understand that it's a difficult time now, and we you, we're sorry for losing your mom. I know that that adds to the difficulties, but but we've got to have some plan if the council decides to give more time. And I'm not saying they will or that they should, but if they do, I mean, you know, it's our responsibility to make sure your neighborhood also doesn't suffer because of because of your neglect. So that's, those are some of the things that have to be considered.
And so, I'm sorry, is it Ricardo or Ricardo?
Ricardo. Ricardo.
So, so what can you tell us tonight that if we give you this olive branch and give you this extra time to to repair, what 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 can you start doing and?
First thing that'll get fixed is the windows.
Okay.
Uh, there's two windows that that they need to be replaced on uh on the driveway. The cars are already being removed. Uh, there's there's another vehicle there, but it's got, it's our vehicle and it's it's got, it's got a registered tags.
It, but it's movable, it's functioning, okay.
Yes, the the one that wasn't functioning on is already in the shop and it's already working, yes.
I see some sighting issues as well in those photos. Uh, is that? Tom, which one's the priority here? It'd be the windows i- on the on the.
Priority to us would be, you know, that it's closed up. I mean, if he can get the windows on it, if he can clean the outside in in sixty days, I mean, I could give him more time, I mean. But definitely, like, we don't want it to be an eyesore of the neighborhood. We don't want people to think, hey, here's this great place I can go hang out. Even though they're there, I mean, they're working, and they're not watching that every minute of the day, you know, so.
Yeah, Ricardo, i- is it clear to you that if we give you extra time that, you know, if you come back and and there's little or no improvement, that there's not a second chance here?
Yes.
And this is your second chance?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
I I don't want to give sixty days. I I'd like to bring it back to committee in thirty days, no more than thirty days. And if nothing's happened, I mean, we need to see something happening within thirty days. And I'm not saying it has to be all done.
Yeah.
But we need to see something being done within thirty days.
Is that workable, Tom, for you?
Yeah, I mean, I would love to be able to go out there and give a report that he's got windows up and he's done things. Like I said, I openly said he has done some tree trimming, just because there were some down branches and things hanging over different places, and they have taken care of that. So if he can even get some of that done with getting it sealed by the in thirty days, I can give that report, then we could go forward from there.
What about taking into consideration some of these supply issues we're having? I know it's improved. Some of the supply issues, I don't want to give Mr. Ricardo an excuse here, but, you know, what if?
Well, then he can explain that to us in thirty days.
You know, and supply issues as far as windows, I mean, our local Lowe's has lots of windows, and I've used them myself. I mean, if he's using standard windows, he should have no problem.
If he can't get the windows, he can board it up.
Yeah, he could at least board them up, but it's like, that's a temporary fix, but there are windows available at Lowe's.
Well, I don't think we're looking for temporary fixes, though. I think we need, I don't think we're looking for temporary fixes. We we we're looking for permanent fixes, I would, I would assume.
Well, I'm gonna move that we table this one until the first meeting in May.
May second.
Committee meeting.
First committee meeting.
May second.
Do we have a second?
And if that meeting, you'd want me to give like a a good account of what he's done?
Right, yeah. And with some updated pictures, too, if if we need them.
You have any questions?
Did you second that, Mike?
Yes.
Did you hear that, Amelia?
No.
Lawson seconded.
We have an a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Do you have any questions, uh, Ricardo?
No questions.
Do you know how to get in tou- touch with Tom?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Hey, Ricardo, it'd probably be a good idea to be back here at that meeting in May, just.
I will.
So Tom can tell us what all's been done.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Thanks, Tom.
Okay, we just have one more? This'll be an easier one, I hope.
We have, oh, we have a uh an ordinance ordering the raising and and removal of residential structure located at twenty-one fifteen North Fifty-Sixth Street.
Correct. Okay, this is one that, over the years, I've dealt with several times. This lady has inherited quite a bit of land over there on the Fifty-Sixth Street, maybe thirty acres. Um, she doesn't necessarily like that the city's out there now. It's moved out there around her, but I tried to explain to her she needs to keep her property up. Um, on the eleventh hour today, she actually did come in to get a demo permit about three o'clock, two thirty, three o'clock today. She has actually cut down a lot of saplings that made it overgrown and harder for our fire department to get to in case of a fire. And she says the garage will be removed um as soon as her people are able to get in there, because it is a pasture. It's kind of soft. So I'm hoping within the week or so they'll get started. They have, they actually have a trash can on site. So I explained to her by her getting this this here, that the next step, if I didn't get a compliance, we just write her a ticket to court. So, but she did get a, she did get a demo permit today and has supposedly hired someone to tear the garage down.
So do we need to table this?
Or you want to just pull it?
I I think pull it and we'll just let it go through the court system, because, I mean, this is, she's going by our rules, and she knows she's got thirty days to get it done. If she doesn't, I mean, just write her a ticket to court, so.
Does she live in the mobile home right there?
No, sir. It's an empty mobile home. At at times, it was occupied by her son and one of the son's friends years ago. Um, but it's just a, it's been empty after they left. She does have uh one other property out there that she rents out, and then she lives, I believe her address is the twenty sixty-one North Fifty-Sixth. Or no, I think hers is actually twenty or eighteen twenty-three North Fifty-Sixth. So she lives on the property. And there's, like I said, a rental house and then several older chicken houses, and you get to this this uh trailer home.
What does the shop have so bad that the that the mobile home, I mean, they're right next to each other, right? Is the shop?
Pretty close, yeah. The, yeah, the the, she claims that there's stuff in there. Then there's also, there's been, she's claiming that people have broken into it, the neighbor to the north, which, you know, it's hearsay because we don't have any reports of it or anything. Um, and again, that's what I told her. If she just kept it cleaned up and it wasn't so overgrown, it'd be a lot easier for the police and everybody to keep an eye on it for her. And if it didn't look like it was so empty, you wouldn't have people wanting to break into it, you know? But she, I don't know what she has in there. I've never been in the in the houses, I mean, in the garage itself. Had been in the trailer house in ten or twelve years, so.
No, if he, we can just pull it from the agenda and since she's got a.
Yeah, like I said, she got it today, and it gives her thirty days, and if she doesn't get it done, we can just stroke her a ticket and let the judge deal with her.
Thank you, Tom. That closes health and sanitation.
Thank you very much.
Yes, I'd like to open up the community develop development block grant uh committee. Uh, we we got Dean Allen here to discuss the upcoming fiscal year twenty twenty-two requests from nonprofits for uh our upcoming CDBG fund.
Good evening, council. How are you guys doing?
Good.
Good, Dean.
Awesome. So FY twenty-two funding, right now, we are waiting for basically the um basically the House assigned the uh word packet so we can get our our funding for twenty twenty-two. Right now, as of last year, we had eight hundred and four thousand seven fifty-eight of total funding. We're assuming we're gonna get the same. But to our understanding, the administration requested a four-point-five reduction in CDBG funding, so we're just gonna have to wait on that. I'm assuming in forty days, we'll have something. Also, the applications for public service funding were requested in the same manner as previous years. And a total of eight nonprofits requested or received by January thirty-first deadline. These are the ones that gave us an application. It's Compassion House, and a new one is Kendrick Venture Hydration for Life, Bread Alive, Community Clinic, CASA, BFW Post two nine five two, Peter four seven nine, and BFW Auxiliary. So these are the.
Just to answer the question, early on, if hopefully you got this figured, I was gonna do it on my phone, but the requests for for services you've got are one seventeen oh thirty-one. What percentage of that is of, is that of the anticipated amount? So we can get that out of the way right away.
Anticipated is right at fourteen percent.
Fourteen, okay.
Right.
So fourteen percent of what?
Of the anticipated eight hundred, let me go back here, of the eight hundred and four thousand seven fifty, if we got that.
You you're using that because that's what we got last time, last year? But there's potential for it to be less.
Correct. It could be more, it could be, I mean, I've read many, many different things from NCDNA and they're saying yes or no.
And do we always fund these? Um, I know, Helen, you hadn't done this, how many years?
Three years.
Three years. So do you know if, have we always funded these without knowing what the grant is from the federal government?
This is more for informational. There's no voting tonight for this. This is just informational, showing what we've gotten.
Would we wait, would we wait until we know that number?
Typically, yes, because right now, we don't know what we're gonna get.
The process to fill out the application requires that you start now so that you can have your public hearings in time and publications in the newspaper. So we have to start with an assumed amount. And then we will have to make adjustments once we get that allocation. Uh, Dean is very optimistic that we'll have it in forty days. Um, there's been times that it's taken an extra two more months after that. Uh, there there's no way of knowing. The administration has to let the money loose. But we have to go through the process to be able to meet the deadlines, to get our application submitted at the time it needs to be, unless HUD gives us an extension. And so far, they haven't identified any extensions. So we're going through the process like we normally do. What we wanted to do is let you know the amount of money in the request that we had. So we don't get down to the last minute and we're showing up trying to to scramble through this. Uh, we don't have to fund all of them at the requests that we've asked for. We've made adjustments in the past because we didn't have enough money. There's a couple of times we approved them at council meeting, and then the actual allocation came in less, so we just percentage them down to get to the number that we needed to do to be, to save that that same percentage. So it's kind of a up in the air, but if we don't do it, we're not gonna be, have our application ready in time.
And just just to remind everyone, this this particular request, depending on how the how the money comes in, is it fourteen percent? What is the federal limit that can be spent out of CDBG at percentage-wise of the total?
Fifteen percent.
Fifteen percent.
Fifteen, okay.
I know we've done only ten ten percent, and that's great.
Right.
Um, I would just hand you the packet and say, you know, choose the ones you wanna.
Didn't we bump that up at one point?
This last year, we did. We got up to. This last year we did. We got up to.
To ten, to thirteen percent?
Yeah.
Thirteen point five, right?
We were, we were having trouble doing enough, uh, doing enough construction to help. And, and I don't see that as getting any better either with the way.
You got to remember, when you take this money, you've got all these reporting requirements. And sometimes if you don't get enough money, it's just not worth the time and effort it takes to get it done. The only other advantage that we have, even if the allocation is lower with the new census figures and the new distribution of low income, we may get a higher percentage than we got in the past because they're using new census information. So the, the total allocation could be down, but we could be getting the same amount or more. There's just no way to know and nobody at HUD can tell you that right now.
What I'm, the point I'm making is that, I know we've always tried to keep it around ten percent, but if we can't, if we can't get the, the contractors we need to spend the rest of that on housing rehab, then we ought to be, we ought to be putting it in nonprofits that are actually doing a lot of work that a lot of people need right now.
Well, let, let me brag on Dean and Shane. They have done a really good job of moving the money through the system a little bit faster, even in these trying times. And right now, we have two contractors that are bidding on projects. So we, we've come a long ways and they work hard trying to record, recruit people. Rehab work is hard work. You don't know what you're getting into till you get in the middle of it and not everybody can do it. So they, but they have worked hard at trying to get someone else identified to help us so that we get as many houses as we can do.
That is good because we hear horror stories all the time about how difficult it is to get trades to do, uh, to do, uh, improvements, home improvements.
Well, and we're seeing delays in getting windows and garage doors and materials. Well, it used to take sixty days, takes?
Ninety. Right now, you're looking at an HVAC system back, this time last year it cost sixty-eight hundred dollars for a twelve-foot square foot house. Now it's going upwards of almost ten thousand dollars just because of getting parts. And it's, it's rough. Right now, as you can see, the, um.
Go back.
On the nonprofits that we funded last year, they're basically all spent. There's a couple of them that have some money left over, but most of them are all spent. I talked to them today and basically they're all spent.
How long do they have to spend the rest?
They have a year. So they're right at their turning point. So basically, BFW Auxiliary has, they told me today that it'll, it'll be gone by end of this month.
Okay.
Also with Bread Alive, I talked to Josh, he said the same thing, that the end of this month it will be done.
Do they have to, how did they prove that to you guys?
I get an audit. So basically they send me basically a, like an Excel spreadsheet, like person one, they usually give me demographics, gave thirty dollars. You know, they just give me a whole list of how they spend it that they give me, basically just send it to me in Excel spreadsheet or a, a brand.
Well, and when HUD comes to monitor us, they go visit. They pick out whichever one nonprofits they want to go look at. They'll actually go look at their books to make sure what they're telling us is what they have on their books. And so there's a.
Not, not Dean, but both.
They look at mine, then they look at theirs.
Is, is there another page of this?
Negative.
Where's, uh, Peta Four-Seven-Nine?
Oh, it, it was on the original.
Yeah.
They got COVID money.
Okay.
Before, and they're asking for COVID money this time.
I got you. Okay.
Yeah. And this is, just shows what, was this COVID money?
Yes, this is CB one and CB three, just to kind of show you where all that money went for the COVID-nineteen money.
I mean, we've put out as much money as we can to those organizations.
Nine hundred and twenty-three thousand.
Yeah.
And I talked to Pine Bluff, I've talked to Ox Springs, and I've talked to Little Rock, and they don't know how to spend their money. They're having problems spending their money. They, not, from what I heard, they're not doing it right.
For, uh, which money are you referring to?
The CB money, the COVID-nineteen money that we got. They're just, they're, they're spinning it improperly.
Have we got more of that money coming? Do we know?
No.
Okay.
My knowledge, no.
Not unless the administration sends out more COVID relief money. There's not even.
Okay.
And, and you know, we took the position and all that money went directly to organizations that were providing direct assistance rather than us trying to get in that business. There's no, since created another level of administrations, it went directly to them and it's worked really well. We want to show you a little bit about housing rehab and how it's worked. This is a, oops, okay, Rick, how do I get to that? Mark, can you hit that, uh, ArcGIS thing on the top, somebody? They have worked really hard with IT to create a map that shows you where the houses and the work that's been done from twenty-ten to twenty-twenty. We've done three hundred and sixty-nine homes in that amount of time. Uh, and this is, this is online, right?
Correct. Basically, I went through two thousand nine to now, and I went through and basically dotted every single house that we did. And.
Yeah, can we bring that up just a little bit, guys?
Can you bring it?
Thank you.
Or make it full screen? Can you make it full screen?
So the red dots are fiscal year twenty, the blue ones are fiscal year nineteen. If you go to the base map, you can go through each single year and find out what house were done all the way back to two thousand and ten.
Go down to one of those red dots and click on it so that they can see what information you get.
Okay.
Tells you the location, how much was spent.
Age of the structure, X and Y ranges, your GIS coordinate. Then it has a number that nineteen dash fourteen is basically nineteen, is two thousand and nineteen. And forty-one is basically our code for our file at our office. Then the IDIS number is for HUD. So if someone needs to pull that up in IDIS, they can pull that and it'll show you what we did.
Is that available to anybody?
Yes, it is.
On our web, from our website?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And you'll see that this one was emergency funds. It was doing some, an emergency repair. It wasn't a total rehab, but it was a emergency repair. You also see that it was sold. When the projects are sold, um, the money that we recover from that ten-year uh, loan that's, or lien that's put on the property is paid back prorated damage over time's left. It goes back into the pot. We have to spend that money first. And so the process just keeps continuing as structures are sold.
So you said that was, what, what deems emergency?
So typically with emergency, they'll call us and say, hey, my roof is leaking or my water heater's broken or my HVAC's messed up or plumbing issues. So what we would do is we would get that call, we'd go out and inspect the house and we'd see what's going on. If the roof is leaking, and we was like, yeah, this is a, this is an emergency, we would actually write up a description of work. And we have other contractors that are locally here and we would use them. If it's under ten thousand dollars, we can do that without a bid.
Can you refresh my memory on the qualifications to receive this?
So they have to be in the house for two years or more.
Can you go back, Mark, can you go back to the slides because we put that on a, on a slide so you can see that too?
Also, also Brian, they have to own the house, they can have a mortgage, they have to be up to date on the taxes, mortgage, and insurance. And have to be low to moderate income. No reverse mortgage and cannot be rented.
Okay, thank you.
I mean, we've been to houses where they had a sewer. It's been running out on the ground underneath. We consider that to be a real emergency to go get that fixed.
I agree.
Now, we did talk last week and talked again this morning about visiting the tornado areas to see if there's some low-income homeowners that might qualify for some emergency repairs. We're going to start looking at that area and see if there's any of those, someone who doesn't have insurance or the insurance doesn't pay for all of it to see if we can help with some of that or some of that emergency repair. We kind of waited till it settled down a little bit because it was really chaotic over the, out there last weekend. See if we can kind of help some of those who would qualify otherwise. So we may have more emergency repairs this, with our, this year's money and upcoming one if we get into some of those situations.
That's good. Adam, yeah, Adam will be doing their evaluations over the next, within the next couple of weeks. They should be done with that. Uh, are y'all, Dean, are you talking with Red Cross or anybody about their evaluations or?
Not yet.
Is that something we'll go handle on our own or after this starts to settle out? Okay.
We'll talk to the Red Cross and see what's going on and talk to everyone down on the ground and.
Okay.
Get an assessment, then I'll start handing out pamphlets, working on a brochure right now so I can hand all of them out to the owners down there.
Okay.
And what do we have on, uh, remaining from twenty-twenty-one and, and years prior that we can spend on this?
As of right now, we have right at six hundred and twenty-four-ish thousand right now that we, we have left up in the rest of, on twenty-twenty-one funds.
Yeah.
And we have about a hundred thousand dollars right now into houses.
Okay.
So basically, it's just waiting. We have, we're getting sixty, ninety days to do a house. Typically, like you're talking about, Brian, about the, um, about the windows at Lowe's. If a house, we show up at a house and the house has normal windows, we can get them at Lowe's, we can get a house done in thirty days. Problem is, if these, these windows are extra large, we have to reorder them, it takes almost three months to get them.
Right.
We just have to sit and wait. And typically with Randy Evans, he'll sit and wait until it gets everything, then he'll do the house. So a lot of the houses, really like over on, um, Mountain View, we're just sitting waiting because we don't have material. It's just, but we can, we're doing the best we can to get the HVAC systems done, the roof's done, so they're at least safe.
Y'all have to remember though, we also set money aside out of CDBG money to pay for the bridge access for the McCullough project. And it is moving forward. I think we'll see that move forward in the next sixty days because I think they have all of their tax credits in a, a D, no, a, at the funds put together. We've been to, we're supposed to have a meeting in the next week or so to understand where we are with that project.
Do we have a, I know it would just be a wild guess, but do we have a ballpark on how much CDBG?
I think we're looking at three hundred and fifty thousand.
Okay.
Yeah, three fifty is what we were putting into that to give them direct access to the trail system to help with.
So would that mean we'd have like a hundred and fifty thousand then towards the tornado rehab?
Could have, yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Again, with the tornado rehab, no matter what, we still have to go through, you know, them coming into an application, filling that out, making sure they're qualified, they're low to moderate income.
Yeah.
We still have to do the same process as us doing a normal rehab.
Okay. Well, and, uh, I think one last thing, Dean, I heard, uh, we had the first, uh, marsh lease owner that was a recipient of this this year, right?
This is our second one. We had one about two years ago. So this is pretty exciting. We're getting another one.
No, that's great. That's great to hear. I think this is an awesome program and, uh, thanks for all your hard work.
Appreciate it.
Uh, with that, if anyone doesn't have any, anything else? I'll close, uh, CDBG. I'll take, uh, committee of the whole. We got a resolution authorizing the formation of an active transportation committee presented by Patsy Christie, Director of Planning.
Mary, you want me to take this one?
You can take it. We talked about it in, uh, State of the City and you, I think, but I, I think you can fill in on who will take leadership of this and that kind of thing.
Okay, we are, uh, proposing to create an active transportation committee. So it will be a little bit broader than what the original trails committee would be so that we look at trail development, sidewalk development, how that ties in with public transit. More in a broader base than what we have in the past. It's being established with, with a resolution so that it gives us a little bit more credibility. We'll go through the process of establishing bylaws and some ways that we will appoint people to and keep the, the committee current. Because there's a lot of things going on that I think we need to address. Um, I have that active transportation plan of position, which the new person started this morning, and that new person is Mike Peters. And, uh, he came in this morning refreshed after having been off for a while and ready to start a new challenge. Um, I think he's, he's really excited about working on trails. There's not anybody in the city that knows a whole lot more about the city, the good, bad, and the ugly, and can help us move forward with getting this thing established, working with a really strong committee of addressing some, um, mobility issues, trails, sidewalks, transit issues in Springdale. And I think we're in a really good position, better than we have been in quite some time. You got to give him a little bit of time to kind of get into the swing of this thing because it's a little bit different. And, uh, but yet he still knows how all those kind of things work. And so I think we're in a great position.
Yeah, we, and, and he's going to know, after this, he'll know how easy police chief is, Brian. But he, uh, but, but the committee's not officially formed yet. We do have, we will be sending out invitations to serve on that committee. It is an advisory committee. They would, don't have their own budget. So anything that they recommend will certainly be subject to council approval as far as projects. But we do, uh, we, we do think they'll do great work and we have, uh, uh, you know, a lot of, a lot of what they bring forward will be eligible for turnback funds to be, to, to be utilized for that purpose. So Patsy, you got anything to add to that?
Well, we grant funds, you know, we need, we need to go after as many grant funds as we can get. We'll work directly with, uh, Public Works, Engineering, and Parks and Rec because they do the maintenance in that part too. And so, you know, it's kind of a long-range planning for what we've been doing for a long time just to keep the projects and, and trail and sidewalk development in Springdale.
I think the most exciting part of this is as much as we've done with trails, to really put a, an added focus on sidewalks and sidewalk connections will, will be real attractive to the, to our residents too.
It's great to have trails, but you shouldn't have to drive to them to get on to use them. You ought to be able to connect it to your neighborhoods and those kind of things. And I do have one other announcement. Uh, there is a Razorback Greenway Alliance that's been formed with the seven cities that, uh, have the greenway. And we will receive funding to hire a Razorback Greenway manager. That position was also filled last Friday. Uh, Tristan Hill is the new, uh, Greenway manager. He's going to help. We're developing a new marketing program and some coordination of Razorback Greenway in Northwest Arkansas. It's a great facility, but nobody's really marketed and promoted it like it needs to be. And so we've got somebody on the ground that's doing that. We got a three-year grant to, through the Walton Family Foundation to pay for that. And so we're getting that organization. And he and Mike will, well, I serve as chairman of that committee as well. And so I kind of get to oversee Tristan's work too. And so that gives a chance for Mike and Tristan to work together too. So we're in really good shape in Northwest Arkansas for trails and it's a strong tourism, it's a strong economic development tool, and it's good for the city and it's good for the region as a whole.
So how would the, this committee be made up?
Uh, we've got several residents that, that have, some, some are specific to, to certain aspects of, of sidewalks, uh, ADA accessibility. Those kinds of things that need to be part of the consideration when we discuss this, these things. And, uh, and, and then some will not have any particular expertise. Some have served, there will be a few that have served, have been serving on the Trails Committee. The Trails Committee over the years just really got large. And this is, this has pared it down. How many members are we looking at, Patsy?
Uh, did we say five, five or six? Maybe seven at the most.
Seven at the most and we'll, and we'll develop those, the, the, the bylaws of that, but.
Yeah, and I'll, I'll get those to you as, as we move on.
I think this can be much more effective and, and, uh, and what, more what we need today.
And using the term active transportation, if you look in the infrastructure bill, there's some active transportation money that has been set aside. There's no appropriation been made for it, but we want to be ready in case they, uh, decide to turn some of that active transportation money loose. We'll already have a committee and a, a statement about active transportation in Springdale, just trying to stay even or ahead of the game if we can. Um, we are proposing that they serve three-year terms and a rotation scheduled, all that'll be in the bylaws. And it's for anyone who lives or works in Springdale. You don't necessarily all have to be a resident, but you can work in Springdale because some people spend more time here, working here, maybe than those of us who live here and go someplace else to work. So that's the way it's set up and that's what the resolution indicates.
I'll make a motion that we move this resolution, um, to council with recommendation for approval.
Second.
You got this, Ken? Well, so, um, yeah, thank you for bringing that up. This is the first time this coming before me in this manner, but we can do this and then set the bylaws later on? That's procedurally okay?
Yes.
Yes. The, we'll probably bring, Patsy, I would assume staff will work with the committee and bring proposed bylaws that, will those be council-approved? They don't have to be.
Yeah, that's.
Like, like Patsy said, this is really, the intent of. The intent of this really is to kind of morph what was our Trails Committee and it's something that's more, um, up to date.
Yeah.
And more, uh, focused. So, and it's not something that, 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 uh, requires, uh, council action, but obviously we want to get the word out.
Patsy, did we have, we, I think, I know we'll have some ex officio members of this committee. They will be planning staff, well, and Mike Peters and.
Yeah.
I, I think Mike Peters will chair this committee. Is that correct?
Mike, I don't know that he'll actually chair it, but he'll be the staff person responsible to keep the committee going.
Okay.
Yeah, it'll, it'll probably have its own chairman that's elected amongst the group. And I didn't bring you bylaws because I think this group needs to kind of have a chance to organize itself and discuss how they think they can move forward and have their most impact on what's going on in Springdale. But I've got a draft as a place to start and we'll probably do that in the first couple of. and we'll probably do that in the first couple of meetings, trying to get that together. Uh, Mike and I talked this morning about trying to have, if this gets approved at council next Tuesday, have a meeting before the end of the week to kind of an organizational meeting and, you know, try to get started, um, so we can get things moved on this. There is a new round of TAP money that is available, and he's going to sit in on a, on a seminar on how you apply for those funds, and he's got to do that Thursday, because that comes up in June, and then there's some more additional money. There's more money that came to the region for trail development. We need to make sure we're in line for those. The state has more TAP money, and you have to go through their process to do that. Um, and then he needs to become familiar with the Walton Family Foundation as a major funder, and we get through all that kind of stuff, is looking for sources so that we can continue to develop. Um, they had a sidewalk survey done in Public Works previously that gives us a location of the missing lengths of the sidewalk. We want, we may want to come back and, and get some more condition information. We may identify some areas where we know that their sidewalks are missing, and we know we have a lot of travel, of people walking, that we need to maybe get some additional information and look at preparing sidewalks or getting some sidewalks built in that. A lot of things to discuss, and we're really just starting out, trying to figure out where to go from here.
So, but the other ex officio members we've talked about were, besides planning staff, we have a Public Works-
Parks and Rec, Engineering.
Staff, Parks and Rec, and Engineering, and those are non-voting members-
Right.
That, that are there to advise.
Right. All support staff to the committee as they have questions and as we move forward through different topics.
Okay. I think this is great and much, much needed. Uh, so we got a motion and a second of forwarding this to, forwarding this resolution to council with recommendation of approval. Um, any more comments? So all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose, same sign. And that concludes, uh-
Anything else?
So, yeah, uh, since we were talking about trails, and I know you've been terribly, terribly busy, so I hadn't really wanted to mention it, but I did ride Dean's trail recently.
Okay.
And saw two pretty bad, uh, uh, graffitis on Dean's trail. And, uh, what is our process? Does someone-
Our process-
Travel the trails to look for that, or?
Uh, staff should notice that and report it. Uh, I know Parks and Rec mows it, so they should see that stuff and report it. But anybody ride, anybody riding it can take pictures and send it to me, or we'll send it. Frank, should we send it to you or to Ron Finley? Yeah, police need to see it, and then you'll work with Public Works to get it cleaned up.
One of them was on, actually, on the concrete, just past the rodeo. The other one was on the fence just past, is that Ford Avenue that, Avenue that's just being-
Yeah.
Finished. But anyways, but it seemed like every time I ride Dean's trail-
Yeah.
There's graffiti.
Yeah, and we need, we, we need to hear about that so that we can get it cleaned off as quickly as possible. And, uh, and, but the police need to see it, because they can, they can, they can document that stuff.
And then the other thing, Mayor, we have a transportation committee within the city, correct, that deals with stop signs and-
We do. It is now, it is now Public Works. James, James Smith, uh, we just need to forward all that, all those requests to Public Works, and James will work with his staff.
Like speed limits?
Yeah.
Goes through a transportation committee?
It goes through, yes, Public Works.
Okay. And do we have a council member on that?
I am, I believe.
Okay. How, uh, where's Ryan, Brad? How are, how are we handling that? We made a change. James requested that we, we changed the way we do the traffic committee. And, and James isn't here tonight. Do you know how we're? Was James still on Zoom?
I am.
Okay, James, can you help address Jeff's question, if you heard it, about how we're, how we're, uh, doing traffic committee issues now?
Right, we're dealing with those in-house, so whenever a complaint comes up, then we will go out and look at it, investigate it. If we need to put counters out, we do that as well. And then we need to, um, send that information to PD if it's a speeding concern or something of that matter.
Well, particularly, I'm asking, um, did that, is there still a committee?
We have the availability to have a committee meeting if there, one comes up that we can't resolve the issue.
So there's not really a-
Not a regular committee meeting.
Right.
And the, and the example that I'm bringing up is change of the speed limit on Don Tyson. Cause that probably got more calls from the different, the different council people. I, I know, I did, Mike did, I know. On, when that change was made, seemed like it would have been good to have had a heads up on that.
Okay. Yeah, because we had a lot of infrastructure. They kept getting damage in that section. They were running trees over, knocking at the privacy pin, taking off the guard rail for the, the ditch lines.
That also made that center section consistent with some of the more curvy areas on both ends, correct?
Correct.
I think, did, Patsy, I don't know if you or, or James, did Tyson also request that because if it's in front of corporate there where a lot of turns in and out? That's what started that, Jeff. But you're, you're right, we should have a better way of giving-
Well, I just didn't know if we still had a committee. I know that there used to be actual committee meetings.
Right. It, it really got cumbersome and they didn't have a lot to discuss, is why we-
Well, and, and also within that committee, it was still at the discretion of the Public Works Director to take action. So even if that committee made that recommendation and the Public Works Director felt like that decision wasn't arrived the way it should, he could still have arrived that. And so a lot of it was under his purview anyway, and they were having a lot of meetings, wouldn't get a lot done, and some things were needing to be handled in-house anyway. So we just thought we'd simplify it streamlined.
The public needs to know, and the council needs to know, anything you've got, we would have taken to a, uh, that committee earlier, just go straight to Public Works.
That's right.
And, and they'll, they'll deal with it or give us a reason that we shouldn't.
Yeah, James does handle a lot of those things. Whenever those complaints come in or questions, can we make these changes? He's still addressing those in the same manner.
Thank you.
Anything else?
I attended that master plan downtown, and I thought it was excellent. I don't know how many-
Did you go to the Thursday night one?
I did.
Cause I was at the Wednesday night one, and it was packed, too. Very good.
And Thursday was as well. So I thought it was very successful, and I was, I was glad to see the changes that are coming about and to hear the conversation and the things that people were thinking about, um, for our future in downtown was pretty impressive.
Great. Mayor, I, I, I do want to commend you, your office, and all of our first responders on the incredible job they've been doing since, uh, last week.
Thanks, Jeff. I'll tell you, we've got, we got great folks. And then to carry on that, uh, since the volunteer work was able to be started, we've got, I, I'll, I'll tell you all this, and I've told several. Many of the organizations that have come in to help us and help organize volunteers, uh, I know of two at least that have said, you know, they work all over the state and sometimes all over the country, and they said they were just blown away by how Springdale responded. And I know it's, it's not all Springdale, but the majority of it is. Some of it's from other parts. We, we got a lot of help from Northwest Arkansas. But, uh, but hats off to, to our residents who continue to, to come out and help their neighbors. So, but I appreciate that. Our, our first responders, our Public Works, uh, and our utilities were out from the beginning moment, uh, trying to address these issues. And so appreciate that.
Can I have just a quick follow-up on, on Amelia's comment about the downtown master plan, public work sessions? We had great turnouts both nights. We didn't have a lot of repeat of people who came for the first night that came the second night. And what was really amazing, they were engaged. They came in to sit down at the table and talk about what they liked about downtown and what they didn't, without any prompting. And that really speaks well for what's going on in Springdale as a whole and downtown specifically. In, in a planner's position, if you get that many people show up for just a general plan, it's amazing, because usually you don't get more than four, five people. But we had 55 each night, or participants plus other people who just showed up, too. It was, it was a great turnout. We'll do another session in May, after they go back and take all these com, comments and come back with some, um, ideas of what the next steps for the master plan is downtown.
So y'all have, even, you know, these were, were for the public in general, but y'all have done targeted-
Right.
Meetings as well.
We did stakeholder meetings with different groups. We did online surveys in three different languages, a business survey, a community survey, and an intercept survey. We got over 1,200 respondents to those surveys. And so it, it really has been, I can tell you that DSA has done a really good job of getting the, the word out to the people in downtown. And people are excited about what's going on in downtown Springdale.
Amelia, I'm glad you went. That might be in your ward someday. Thank y'all.